All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen to the Buchanan City Council meeting. As you can see, this is a very unique special meeting of the Buchanan City Council. As we normally do as city council, we'll ask that we observe a moment of silent prayer meditation and the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the municipal of liberty and justice for all. Everyone get comfortable. Thanks for coming out on such a nice rainy day. At least it's not freezing. The last special meeting was a blizzard outside. Before we begin, let's do a little housekeeping. For anybody who's not around who's never been here before, the bills are back from vacation. That's always nice to see. The bathrooms are on the left in that hallway there. There's two exits, one out the front and one out the back, in case anybody needs to know that. Yes, Mary?
And their restrooms are both the same way.
And there's restrooms on both sides.
Did he?
Yeah, he did.
I missed it.
Having said that, please turn off your cell phones to vibrate only. Channel three is with us tonight. Thank you very much for being here. We're going to ask that you speak up. What we'll do is ask whoever is going to speak to come to the podium so channel three can see, we can hear you, and everyone can hear you as well. Again, this is a very special council meeting. And what I'm very proud to say is this council has listened from the last elections. I know Mary and I particularly heard a lot about during the election cycle that the citizens didn't feel they were being heard, that they didn't feel the council, even if they went to city council, that they could be heard or they were being recognized. Well, city council decided, why don't we take it out to the public? Why don't we change the day, see how that works? Maybe a different time would work. I think it really has worked because it shows that you guys wanted to come out and discuss some of this stuff, some of our issues tonight in particular. Having said that, I'm going to ask that council introduce themselves, just for those who are not aware or may be out from the county, who they are. So I'll start on this end.
I'm Robin with Simon's.
I'm Ron Pugh.
Mary Alba.
Pam Capery.
Dave Thomas.
Thank you very much. As you can see, I'm very proud to see that our councils all come out tonight. They didn't have to be here tonight, so I'd like to have a round of applause to show that they've come out. All right, now this is a very unique meeting as far as a town council hall meeting goes. We're going to call this an open forum meeting. Ultimately, we're hoping in June or July to have another town hall meeting for the citizens, and this case will be an open dialogue question and answers. Tonight is just for the citizens. We want to hear your opinions, your statements, your pros, cons, or if you want us to just not even deal with it on any of the issues that are going to be talked tonight. In the agenda, you'll see three main issues that we started off with, and then there's a fourth called "other." That will be the last thing we talk about. You can bring up anything you want to count on how you feel they should be making decisions or changing the policy according to what you feel is important. I do want to make sure everyone understands though, as of this moment, no ordinance has been changed, there's only drafts, we're only in consideration phase, for instance, the police and fire fees. We haven't come up with the formula. We haven't come up with the exact amount that we're looking to get. What we're trying to do is determine that amount, and hopefully with their help we can do so. I will also say that council meeting on Thursday, on the agenda is nothing pertaining to tonight's discussions. We don't have any ordinances up for reading, we don't have any ordinances up but for drafts. So anything we talk about tonight will not be decided next Thursday either. Having said that, when you come up to speak, we would ask that you address the group as a whole, as council or as the mayor. We ask that you make a statement to your, whatever your opinion is, pro, con, otherwise, tell us why that is, and then we'll give you up to five minutes to do so. If you're like me, you go back to your seat and you go, "I knew there was something else I need to ask," at the end, we will allow you to come back up, and everybody's allowed to say what they want, ask what they want. Well, not ask, but say what you want to say. Having said that, let me ask council, are there any questions from council on tonight's meeting and the operation thereof? Yes, Mary?
Sorry. Did I hear you correctly that they're going to talk to us, we're not making any decisions, but will we talk about what we talk about tonight at the next council meeting?
Yes, that's our opportunity to speak. We get two opportunities a month, first Thursday and the third Thursday. That's the time we get to speak as much as we want. This is the night for the citizens to speak and for us to hear what they want.
Okay, but we won't make any decisions at next council meeting about anything discussed here?
Nope, there's nothing on our agenda as of right now pertaining to any ordinances or drafts that we're going to be making at the next council meeting.
Okay, I got you.
We will be discussing it, of course, and this will be the opportunity at the next council meeting for you to say what you've learned tonight and how we should implement it or use it or not, and anything that we have our discussions on.
Got it.
Is that clear? Yes, Mr. Pugh.
So this is interactive tonight between the citizens and the council?
It is.
And we could converse back and forth?
No. Just like that. It is not interactive. It is for the citizens to come to city council and make their statements as to how they wish we were to proceed and the reason behind it.
Okay.
The next one, Ron, we will have question and answers, and then we can open it up that way. Is that okay? Thank you.
I have something to say, Rick.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
I think the only concern I have, I mean, I appreciate everybody coming this evening and having an opportunity to voice their concerns or opinions or challenges or what have you, but you know, it may be something that we need to consider this evening, Rick, that if somebody says something that is totally sort of off the chart, they may have questions to us this evening, and how would you want to handle that?
I'm hoping that, and I'm almost positive, that our audience with us tonight are fully aware of the politics that are going on within the city. If there is a misguided statement that could be totally off-base or totally false, we can stop that to make sure that the correct answer is there, but this is not a dialogue between council and the citizens. What I will do though, as we begin, and it's only fair that the audience should know as well, as we begin each one of the topics, the first one on our agenda is the BNO comprehensive tax. I will allow council to let the citizens know, if you were to vote today, would you be in favor, against, or uninformed, or you know, you don't know, you're undecided. That way, as they approach and talk to you, they know to whom that they need to speak if there's an issue that you're not for with them, okay? You do have the option not to answer or respond if you wish on that. How about the audience? Does everybody understand what we're going with this? Does it make sense? All right. If there's any questions, I'll try to mediate, I'm sure I will, but to begin with, our first topic, and well, let me do it this way, just to be fair to everybody else. Can I see a show of hands for the comprehensive BNO? Who was going to want to stand up and talk about that? Show of hands? Okay. How about the fire fees? Police and fire fees. I think we're going to start off with police and fire fees. I think it's going to be the majority. Also, I will let you know that you are by no means obligated to stay after your discussion if you make your statement. Please, if you feel you need to go somewhere or do something else, you're more than welcome to do so, don't feel obligated to stay. One last thing, if you have a written statement or you write a statement and read from it, if you put it here, we'll make sure it gets on the official record. So what I will do is open the floor to the first citizen who would like to speak on the police and fire fees. Who would like to go first?
Attending to both the things we're going to talk about this evening, I think it would be proper if you were to tell us where it is right now, just like police and fire fees, what is standing up for discussion, what are we looking at? Because all we hear is what we hear on the street, what we read in the papers, we need to make sure which is right.
That's fair. Well, you can certainly do that, and I thank you for that. I shouldn't do that. I was going to mention that I would do that first of all. We're talking about the comprehensive BNO tax. For those of you who may not be familiar, we're talking about the fire fees. The fire fees, as they stand now, as council has heard from our very own fire chief and from our city administrator, the fees have not changed since 1984. They have been at the $1.50 rate since that time. Unfortunately, our departments have expanded quite a bit. We have a lot more labor, equipment, and workforce payroll to assume in those departments. In order to accommodate or in order to make it easier or beneficial for our fire department, we had to look at what kind of revenues we could generate. The very first, obviously, is the increase in fire fee. Now, I will tell you personally, the police fee, now, we've got to make sure we understand there are two very different fees here. They're not the same. On your bill, it's the same, but they are two very different entities. Speaking on behalf, or speaking in my opinion, on the fire, on the police department, it's my belief that we are satisfactory and in good condition with the fire department at this time. If we were to make a police fee increase, it would be minimal to the citizens, but it also needs to be equitable to those commercial businesses that our police department spend their time at quite a bit. If you understand what I'm talking about there, there isn't an equity as far as who pays a certain amount and who's eventually subsidizing that amount. In my opinion, the fire department is in much more critical condition, and it is my priority to see that the fire fees increase to a point where we can be in a very good place professionally with our department, our fire department. That's our comprehensive BNO in a nutshell, but keep it in mind, just a minute.
That's your fire fee.
Our fire fee, I know I keep wanting to go to BNO. One other thing on that. Right now, no decisions have been made as to the formula for the police or the fire fee. We were looking at square footage, which is the norm in most municipalities throughout the state of West Virginia and indeed throughout the United States. Flat fee at the time in 1983 made a lot of sense. Unfortunately, now, when you have professionals and they get paid what they are with their equipment, that is no longer adequate in any case of a fire. So having said that, we have not figured out, or we may not, depending upon the audience, whether we should even increase the fire fees. Do we want to keep it as they are or not? I believe most citizens would like to see our fire department approve. So having said that, did that answer your question? And before our next item, I'll do the same. What I will do is ask council, starting with Robin, your opinion, yea, nay, or undecided on the fire police.
I believe to be able to better themselves and in order to be able to buy new equipment, new firemen, we don't have enough right now, we only have three right now, and they are spending 124-hour shifts by themselves. Now, I'm not sure if you can imagine being there by yourself and having to run the fire truck, tighten the fire, all by yourself. So I am in favor of raising it, if we can do it at a amount that will not be a big burden to anyone.
Thank you, Ron.
I think we do need to increase the fire fees 31 years, so without increasing any fee in government or any business, it's kind of ridiculous because you know that your expenses are going to somehow catch up and be more than what you have to work with. I look out into the county especially, and I see the fire departments are having a heck of a time getting people out to run a fire. I believe every station now in the county, when you bring one out, you automatically go back up for two others, so you've got three fire departments out on one call. And I know that has a lot to do with volunteers, which we can't do anything about the volunteers, it's just an impossibility. However, we can alleviate something within the city which might give them a better feel of what they're doing, and that is to provide them money for new equipment, better equipment, the mask and the systems that they wear, the air systems, those things after a year or two just don't work anymore. You've got to get rid of them. That's according to federal law, I think. But the firemen, two extra firemen would allow them to not have 24-hour shifts. It would take a lot of wear and tear off of their relationships outside the fire station. And then let's go to the police department. We have a good police department in Buchanan. I personally think that we're at a place where we could keep it with the exclusion of an extra man on the drug task force that we're doing, that we're going to be working with. Upsher County has one of the least crime rates in the nation. If you look around us to Harrison County, Montague County, Marion County, they're all having armed robberies and daytime burglaries every day. If you watch the news at night, and you'll see what they're doing. We don't have that problem here, and I think the reason we don't have that problem here is because our officers are doing a darn good job of keeping it out. When you do see stuff like that happening, you're going to see on a huge basis, a lot more crime and a lot more be-ees and robberies and things like that. So I'm for both of the taxes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pugh. Mrs. Alba?
Mr. Mayor, I, and people, citizens, I am for the fire tax for the police, or for the fire department, because I truly believe that they need it. And I studied Chief Tacy's information and stuff that he's presented to us, that he needs, and the main thing that he says is that, you know, they can't respond to a fire if they don't have enough people there, okay? And not responding to a fire is not what our fire department is sitting there for within the city. And yeah, there's lots of reasons that the county volunteer fire departments, nobody wants to be a fireman anymore, nobody wants to be a police officer anymore, you know, nobody wants to serve on city council anymore, so it's one of those things that, you know, that's out of our control. So I am in support of two more new officers for, actually, they're already down one, and they asked for two more, so that would have been three, so we're hopefully looking for two more for them, for the fire department. And I'm going to say publicly, as much as I have always supported our Buchanan's police department, and I still do, but I still believe that we are covered with city policemen. I still believe that we've got our county police down the street, and I think they also should be recognized for the job that they do. But I don't think we need any more funding to go to our city police. I think we're okay in that area.
Thank you, Mrs. Alba. Mrs. Capery?
I too am in favor of hiring two new firemen. We have three paid firemen, and I think it can be very dangerous most of the time when they have to show up and there's only one person on the scene. We also have to think of the equipment that is getting old in our trucks, and we, I believe we are scored certain points from the state fire marshal if we don't have what we need. Everything's getting old. Just to equip one fireman costs $10,000 for their suit up, and I'm sure a lot of that's getting old too. But just like last week and week before last, seemed to me like the fire whistle went off every two or three hours, and I was very concerned, you know, we had three paid firemen on the job, and you know, we don't know what they're going into, and I know they're getting, you know, that 24-hour shift is hard on them, and they all have, they have families also, and I just think that if one of them gets hurt, we're really going to be in a lot of trouble. So, and as far as the police, I feel that right now, we are, we have sufficient amount of policemen. I don't want to go any less, but right now, I think we are covered pretty well with that because we do have the county down the road, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Capery. Mr. Thomas?
Well, when you look at, when you look at the fire and the police fee, you really can't look at it in isolation without the BNO tax. Because if we had not initiated a BNO tax about 12 years ago, we would have been really under the gun to hire, to have rather, fire and police fee increases over the years. I mean, the BNO tax allowed us, quite frankly, to sort of ignore the increases in the fees for fire and police. I think they're two separate issues that have to be dealt with independently. You know, we look at the report that Mitch gave city council several times, and the number of required calls that have escalated over the last five, 10 years, we really need to have more individuals working for the fire department. Police department, we have some inequities there as far as who's paying for what. You know, we've made the comment that the Walmart pays $180 a year for police protection. You take a look at the number of calls that are required by the police department to go respond to different issues at Walmart in the time. So it's a very comprehensive problem. There's no easy solutions to it, but we have a responsibility to provide quality services to our citizens, and I think the BNO tax is part of that issue, you can't really isolate them. So I look forward to taking a look at different drafts and trying to be responsible to all the business persons that are within the community and the residents within the community. And I would throw out a challenge to the county. They haven't had an increase in their fire fee for 31 years either, and we got issues there that we have to deal with. And I have advocated that we sit down with the county commissioners many times to talk about these kind of issues that we both have to look at.
Well, thank you, Mr. Thomas, and just regarding the whole county discussion at this point, because we're really talking about the city. And I appreciate that. I do also want to add, just for a little of the conversation, I, and I mentioned at the beginning, I am for increasing the fire fees to a different formula, and I am for a minimal increase in the police fees. I do want to let you know though, there's been some stories out that when we went to Bridgeport, we were looking at their fire fees quite the opposite. Actually, we're looking at their first due area fire fees, which is quite a different animal, which is a very unique thing that Bridgeport was doing. We also took a look at Fairmont's, Philippines, Elkins, Charleston's, and Bluefield's fire fees and police fee schedules, just so we had an idea on the better conglomeration of how that would work. So having said that, that's a little bit of the education. I believe Mr. Rylands would like to have the floor. If, when Mr. Rylands is done, somebody wants to come on up, then come on up. I'm sure you remember CJ.
Good evening. I'm CJ Rylands. To those of you that don't know me, I earn my living and make my investments on downtown McCann. The last time I addressed this issue was a previous iteration of the fire fee, and I think at that time, the cost was going to impact us about $7,200 a year. I have looked over this most recent iteration that, or draft, working draft, or whatever you have, and I had a few questions, but I guess primarily, I want to reiterate the fact that the cost of doing business in our community, the more we increase it, the less likely, or the more obstructions we have to annex someone or ask someone to join in or to open a business. So part of the process that I went through the last time when Sam and I talked about this, you know, we compared utility bills and costs of doing business outside of the city limits in Tenerton and downtown, and we found out that for my one building where the restaurant is, it costs $5,700 more a year to be in city limits. Now that's, for those of you who don't know, it's broke down into increased real estate taxes, increased personal property taxes, there's a higher multiplier within the city than without, there's BNO tax attached to your gas bill, electric bill, there's increased taxes and fees on your water bill. So taking another step in the direction, now, I support the efforts of the fire department, and I think they need supported, but when we talk about needing money, from what I understand, that for the last 12 months, there's been a $1.2 million carryover in the general fund, and we have $503,000 in the rainy day fund. So what, you know, the question of motivation to maybe separating this, now, when you look at the water bill, it says $30 a month on mine, and that's police and fire. I believe the fire fee is separate from that and a new fee, not to ask you a question, but I believe that's the way it's structured. So I don't think the other fee will go away, whether they just call that a police and fire, or police and then there's a separate fire fee. So back to the main point of increasing the cost of doing business in our community and the ramifications it can have for people looking at us or for businesses that are already here. You know, we depreciate commercial property over 20 years, and some of our major big-box stores have been here 15. So when we, when they come to that 20-year point, they have to make a decision to trade, sell, abandon, and start depreciating a new property somewhere else, because that's part of the viability of their economic investment. So we need to think about the big picture, you know, what are the needs and how are we going to accomplish that? Currently, you know, when I examine taxes, personal and real, on businesses, they are twice the rate of residential. But what's also interesting is that 70% of the gross income that the city receives from their portion of real property taxes and personal property taxes equals 70% of the gross revenue from those fees comes from businesses for the city government. So try to be cognizant that when we're applying fees and charges, that we don't keep hammering the businesses in a disproportionate manner. I mean, it could be, yes, all these residents are voters, and the businesses in a lot of cases are from people that live outside of city limits and don't have a voice. So I'm in one aspect speaking for them, and hopeful that we, what's the specific need and can, you know, the money that we pay, what does that for? You know, can't part of the $5,700 that we pay as one business be to support the fire, fire fee, or whatnot? So that's kind of it. I drifted off, and I didn't speak to the comprehensive plan. Am I five minutes up? Is there a timer?
Yeah, a minute.
One minute? All right, throw it in. We currently have, we currently pay BNO tax, it's retail, and there's a million dollar exemption, but what they're talking about, a comprehensive plan where every business enterprise pays, and I am not in agreement with that, because a lot of the cases, the doctors, the lawyers, and these professional people, and landlords on rental income, these people are mobile, and they can move outside of city limits. And if you want to see the, you know, economic evolution is the long-term response to the business climate, and if you want to see the end result, go to downtown Clarksburg or downtown Fairmont, where they're stuck with huge public services bills, and they don't have anyone to tax, and they just keep incurring greater and greater costs of doing business, and everyone's gone and they're left with costs and no way to pay for it. So I don't want to see that happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rylands.
[applause] Can I have a question on the fire fee?
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Joey Maxa. I am one of your paid firemen here. I'm also a volunteer. I'm not as much speaking to either side of it, obviously, I'm pro-fire department, I'm probably pro-fire fee, but I don't think there's been a voice of reason coming from us in the lower part of the department yet. And I want to kind of progress that to you guys this evening, especially to council. First, I want to make sure you understand, I don't disagree with anything my boss has said. He's done a hell of a job supporting us so far. I'm his backup, and that's what I'm here to do tonight. I'm going to cut my five minutes close, so don't cut me off if I run a few. I'm going to cut my five minutes close, so don't cut me off if I run a few seconds over. Good evening, council, mayor, and community members. Before I get started with what I promise to be an explanation of the importance of your finding of your fire department, I would like to thank you for being here, for allowing me to bestow some of my knowledge on your listening ears. Like I just said, I'm going to try my hardest not to make this five minutes go too far over. I'm not going to dazzle you with figures and numbers, that's my boss's job, and that's for other people to do. What I want to do is, I want to make three basic points that deal with values, that deal with service, and deal with the science of the fire service. Because I don't think the call-in public understands that. I hope that these points add importance to the issue of the fire fee for you guys. Them and you all. Firefighters are a group of people who are more determined and value-driven than any other local group that I have ever been part of. And I've been part of plenty over my time, however short it may be already. So much so, that many of them do this inherently dangerous job completely free. I hear a lot of talk about paid firemen tonight, I'm one of them, I'm a very proud one. I'll be the first to tell you, you don't have a paid fire department, you have a combination fire department. You have volunteers. Don't forget that. They believe in outcome, not income. They believe that the outcome they leave on scene is greater than any income that's brought in my pocket, that's brought in a volunteer's pocket, which is very, very minimal, if any at all, over the course of his career. That's truly what drives firefighters of any age, of any gender, of any rank, career or volunteer. Because of this value-driven group of people, many times, people looking from the outside lose touch with reality when it comes to the fire service. They see fire trucks, you see fire hoses, you see the tools we bring, and it's there when it's needed, and that's all that matters. To them, to you all, the fire service is as easy as black and white. There's nothing further than the truth. Either the fire truck shows up, or it doesn't. That's how we're viewed. I think most of you would agree. The money and support that is deprived from the fire service, and whenever I say deprived, don't take that as an insult, but it's been 31 years, so... That affects who is on that truck, how many is on that truck, how well they are trained, and what years' technology they are using. It also greatly affects how quickly a sufficient number of firefighters arrive. NFPA standard, 2,000-square-foot house, 17 firefighters, 300 gallons a minute, that's the standard, we can't give you that. When you cut money, or when you cut support of any form, you don't affect me as a firefighter near as much as you affect yourself, you affect your community, and you affect your family, and you affect your friends. This is your fire department. I'm a fireman. I belong, I'm part of it. This is your fire department. This is the City of McCannan and surrounding areas' fire department. So think about that when you request a change in the ordinance, whether it's based on making it easier financially, or whether it's easier for the City of implement, think about that. Think about what you're actually cutting it. Your cuts affect your service. They may affect my job, but they affect your service. Don't expect FDNY service on a Mayberry budget. It's not happening. In this relationship, you are both the funding source and the customer. I only deliver. I can bring as many as six in our first-out fire engine, or I can bring one, which we're lucky not to have to do, because another part of the puzzle is our couple college live-ins who are volunteers. They'll be leaving at the end of next year. Having one, or six, or any combination of numbers in between, greatly affects the service that's delivered to you all, and our safety, as well as yours. Lastly, I would like to discredit a horrible thought process that seems to have lurked into the background in recent years. People have made the statement that fires are less dangerous. And are not as prevalent. This couldn't be any further from what the actual truth is. I've heard this from citizens, I've heard this from past council people. Science tells us otherwise. Our home furnishings are a solid form of petroleum, our engineered systems that keep our buildings erect are nothing more than sticks, toothpicks at best, and glue. This makes for a very dangerous fire environment. The normal living room in modern America will be engulfed in flames in just over three minutes, whereas furnishings of the past took nearly a half hour. That is a reduction in time for your family to discover a fire and escape of over 25 minutes. We have all been preached to since we were little, that it isn't the fire that most victims succumb to, it's the smoke. Guess what? Today's smoke is 10 times worse. In fires in the United States today, there's a death every two hours and 42 minutes. At what hour, at what hour will this strike McCannan? Go ask the citizens of Elkins what happened to them two years ago, Brian, was it? We need to empower our fire department. I say hour, because I receive service too. We need to empower our fire department to be there with the appropriate response times, and the appropriate people, the appropriate tools, and the appropriate equipment to minimize and eliminate casualties, and provide a positive outcome. One thing I want to leave you with also, that is something I hope to take a movement in the fire service and press upon you right now, is I see a 25% discount for sprinkler systems for commercial structures within the city limits. You guys can do what you want, I agree with that, I understand why you're doing that. I want you to give that to the residents also. There's a big movement to incorporate residential sprinkler systems, and if somebody chooses to do so, they only deserve the same discount. I will leave you with a quote from a famed fire chief named Alan Brucicini. "Fast water is the best water, whether it comes from a fully-staffed fire engine or a sprinkler system."
Anyone else on the fire fee or the police fee? All right. Good. Please.
All right. Just come on in. My name's Steve Goff, and I wanted to come this morning, and this afternoon, to talk about police and fire fees. I understand the needs of the police, I understand the needs of the fire department, but I address this to the council, what are you doing to control costs on the fire departments? There's a lot of excellent new equipment available through the government GSA excess program. Yes, there is. I go to the depots, I've been there. Brand-new breathing apparatuses, new boots, new suits, it's there. You need to look into it. On the law enforcement issues, there's cavalry helmets, you guys are buying them, they're free. You guys are buying weapons, they're free. You guys are buying cars, you can get GSA, through the GSA program, through the LESO program, which is administered by the West Virginia State Police, that's the law enforcement services organization, is the number program. They have cars that are FBI and Secret Service trade-ins, one and two years old, 15,000 miles on them. You guys that are not using them, you're wasting taxpayers' money. That's all.
Mr. Goff, could I have, come back there, could I have that website you're talking about, please?
Oh, go through, if you want law enforcement equipment, it's the LESO Coordinator of West Virginia State Police. It was Janice Tasharia, she's retired, and she's replaced now by another person in Charleston, West Virginia State Police. As for the LESO Coordinator, and...
Okay. Did you explain why you are aware of these programs?
I've screened for the West Virginia State Police in '94, '95, when I was active in Army. And I went most of the depots in the eastern United States. And I got the West Virginia State Police gas masks, M16s, M14s, night vision equipment. I even got them a OH-6 helicopter. They flew the helicopter for 16 years, and it was all free. That's all. Yes.
I wish you had brought this to our attention before. Why have you not come to us before?
I've talked to law enforcement before, and they wasn't interested in any Army junk. That's what I was told.
Thank you, Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Steve.
Oh, dear.
Since we can't answer our answer questions, I'm kind of at a loss, because I really was looking for some clarification, so I'm going to throw these out at you. In the ordinance on page two, sorry, got your ordinance there? I can't read, it says dual residential structure means any structure or unit intended for two separate families. I guess I need some qualification or clarification on some of these things. You get into item D, under that article, and it says non-residential unit structure. If a structure has multiple uses, such as commercial and residential, be classified as non-residential, which I assume means commercial. There's a lot of us, I see several in this room, and we're included, who have mixed, what I would call mixed-use buildings. And it's maybe in here, but then it goes down, and it talks about the square footage. So if you go on to the next part, residents are going to be charged $3, that's, I understand that, and believe me, I'm for the fire department, so don't take that, I'm just looking for clarification. For instance, commercial, a fee of $1,250 a month will be charged against commercial on 2,500 square feet or less, $25 for 10,000, $3750, and so forth. We, and I know CJ, and there are several people on Main Street, are going to own a lot of folks, or a lot of buildings, that have offices on the first floor, retail shops on the first floor, and then you have apartments on the second floor. So my question is, and my concern is, when you get to the calculating here, and you're looking at square footage, well, that building could have 5,000 or 10,000 square feet, but maybe 2,000 or less is commercial, is a retail business. So now what happens to the people upstairs, are they going to be, because according to this, it says that the city or someone will look at building square footage. So if you're going to take that building and look at the square footage, then you're going to break it down, we're not going to pay that in most cases, but our tenants are, and our residents are. So we have to go back to them, and let's say, for example, one of us has a building that's 12,000 square feet. So you have three offices on the first floor, you have four apartments, does that mean every office and every individual apartment, single-family dwelling above it, is going to pay $3750?
Let me ask you this, what do you think?
I can't imagine, I can't imagine telling my tenants, because they happen to live in a building, that there's an office underneath, or retail business underneath, that they're going to have to pay $3750 a month for any kind of fee, because they happen to live, and there's an awful lot on Main Street that have, Jake Andrews, I mean CJ Rylands, I mean, just goes on, we've got stuff, it just goes on, they write so many, and I just don't see a calculation here, maybe you haven't thought about that?
That's what we need to know, we want to know from you. Any concern you see written there?
That's a big... CJ, do you have that?
Yes, I asked that question today to someone, and they're an attorney, and they're reading that implied that if it was commercial space, you would be on the square footage basis.
Correct.
But then each living space would be assessed $3.
That's what I don't know. It was vague to me, and...
As they interpreted it as it currently exists.
That's a good interpretation.
Well, I don't know if that's true, but I...
What we need to know is, do you have any problem with either one of those? So what we would want to know from you then, we think that the residents should be, say, at three, but we don't think the square footage for commercial is correct. We would like you to address that. So any of the concerns you have, you should put that way. I agree with this, but I don't agree with this, and we can write that down and take it back.
And that's kind of what I'm getting at, is if you have, for instance, we have small offices, and these folks aren't paying a lot of rent, but there's maybe two or three on the first floor, and there's four apartments upstairs. Again, if the totality of that building that you look at is X number of thousand square feet, are those two or three small retail, or small, like an insurance office, that's not generating a huge amount of income, are they going to be, let's say it's a 25,000-square-foot building, are they going to pay each, there's three of them there, are they each going to pay that $3750 for commercial? Then you go back upstairs, and you've got four apartments, do they pay the $3, which would be more equitable? Or for some reason, if they're, again, included in that totality, they're, because it says if it's a multi-use building, it's commercial. And that would tell me that if I have two, I don't know, a retail business, an insurance business on the first floor, and then the totality is X number of thousand square feet, I've got four apartments up there, that that is a commercial building, therefore, that's the way I read it, and I hope I'm wrong, is what I'm saying. So that's why, I hope you'll look at that, because that's a big issue with a lot of folks on Main Street and town. That was my biggest concern. All for supporting the fire department, if you can come up with an equitable solution, all for it.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the fire fees, please?
I do. I guess I have two issues. Most of you know, pardon?
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought everybody knew who I was.
Maybe one person that doesn't.
Okay, in case there's one person that doesn't, I'm Alyssa Linger Mills. My husband Terry and I own the buildings, well, it's connected, at 14, 16, and 18 North Canal Street. My gowns shop, the crowning touch is in one, the other one's vacant right now, and the Market Bistro's, and the third. And then we have all apartments up above that. Usually, and growing up, we always heard that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I realize that up until perhaps this next individual, or these individuals are hired, it hasn't maybe been possible to do. But would it not make sense that it would be better to have, particularly downtown, where the buildings are so close together, have them up to code? And the reason I'm posing that is because before we bought the building at North Canal Street, Terry not only talked to Chief Tacy, but he also brought in the state fire marshal, and made a list of everything we would need to do, were we to purchase the property, what would we need to do to bring it up to code? Well, the list is made, and subsequently, we're moving right along. We've got apartments in, we've got a system that's monitored, I believe, through Micrologic. If, heaven forbid, it picks up a smoke, fire, or anything else, it calls 911 before anybody else has a chance to. At the same time, I'm thinking, you know, if we were on Main Street, and say that there was a way that I could own a building in between where CJ owns, what happens if he's got all his properties? Because I will tell you, every property of his that I've ever seen, once he takes ownership of it, it ends up being fantastically overdone. And it looks to me like he maintains his properties quite well. So my question would be, what if I owned a property right smack in the middle of his? Mine's not up to code, I don't seem to care, I get my rent money every month. Why does it matter? Well, how it matters is, if mine catches on fire, it can burn his down too, and that's not fair. And I think the same thing, because like I said, all of our properties are close together. So my first thing would be, I would hope that when you get this new zoning officer, building inspector, these people or persons hired, I would hope first and foremost, the properties downtown would be inspected, and we would be expected, everyone would be expected to have them up to code, or else not be, like if somebody has people in apartments, I would hope this wouldn't be at McCannan, but you hear about it in Morgantown, that would be considered a fire trap, I would hope that the city wouldn't let them use it to make money from, because you're endangering lives. My second question would be, and I'm just posing this, oftentimes, when groups need money, they do fundraisers. And I do know that the fire department has an elimination dinner. The thing that surprises me is, a lot of people I talk to never seem to get asked to buy tickets. There are a lot of us in town that'll spend money to possibly win money. But my other question would be, is there any other way, I don't know if, maybe through Festival Fridays? I don't know, I'm just asking. Are there things that the firemen, or the firemen's families could work with, where possibly help them raise some more money, to purchase some of the equipment, or at least go towards some of the equipment, that would, you know, and that the community, let's face it, this community supports. Whenever anything goes out, that something needs done, the community supports. We have a great place that we live in here, I know a lot of people don't realize that, but McCannan is a great place, Upsher County is. So has maybe that been considered? Just asking. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a few things I want to cover. A lot of it has been covered, Mr. Rylands, I'm very proud of what he had to say. Instead, and I bristle up every time we talk about raising taxes, especially when you have to write the check form, or when you look at them. But I'm thinking we need to look at ways to reduce costs instead of increase taxes. There's a lot of things that we can do, there's a lot of things that the general public is not aware of. A lot of funds that the... A lot of funds that the police department, you know, don't use, or they overuse or misuse, and I might touch on the fact that we've got some pretty expensive bicycles that haven't seen anybody riding lately. Don't know how bad we need them, maybe we need to put chains on them, I don't know, cabs or something, whatever. But anyhow, when we're looking at that, and as Mr. Golf brought up, the fact that there's stuff out there we can get, there's material we can get for free, you know, and I realize you all have a job, but this is something that can be looked into. And when we look at, in the fire department, I have the utmost respect for the fire department, I understand your needs, the things that you need, and the fact that you give your life each time you go out, whether it be on a wreck or whether it be on a fire, I understand that. But I think that there's probably state money, grants, there's money that can be had to help the fire department, not that they don't need, but, you know, we need somebody in the community, whether it's you folks or someone else, to help with those items, to try to get some of that money. I mean, they can find more ways in trust than throw it away than we came together to. You know, so we need to do that. And I have to say, the fire department probably does need money. I disagree with the police. Nothing against any of the policemen, I'm sure they all do a fine job, but can anybody tell me when the last time you saw one walking to beat? And I realize it's nice to ride an automobile, if you're walking up Main Street, and wind's going down the street, wind will be rolled up tight, you'll have to yell pretty loud to throw a rock at it, and get the attention. I'm just saying. Yeah, not that they haven't done a good job, but there's been some things in town that have been severely overlooked. Matter of fact, right across the water from the old state police or city police office, pretty bad. But anyhow, I'm within agreement with the council persons who did not back the increase for the fire or for the police. And I think, I think we need to sit back and look, and as far as these amendments, whether it be the BNO tax, or the police and fire fees, I realize you folks have a job to do, but when we're talking that kind of money, especially the business people here in town that have huge, huge investments and a lot of money, and not a whole lot of money coming in, Buchanan is not the norm, it's not Fairmont, it's not Morgantown, it's not Clarksburg. So as Mr. Rollins pointed out, what happened to Clarksburg? Sometimes you get too big for your britches. You know, and we need to, we need to stop and take a look at what's in front of us. You know, if we were, if we were to put up a campaign in the paper, on the radio, and do ads, and try to recruit businesses to come into the city of Buchanan, they're gonna say, hey, boys, as soon as you get your will, raise your taxes. You know, that is unless you're a Walmart or somebody like that, then, well, then we'll take care of you. But the average individual businessperson or a small businessperson are gonna look the other way, and sooner or later, when we run them all out of town, there'll be nowhere to go. And as far as these fees, I think, I don't know about anybody else, but I think that there should be a special election, not just, not just you folks coming in on your regular day and having a meeting and revamping and doing this. I think when, once it's finalized, or what you all think is finalized, I think it should be put out in the paper in its true form, and have everyone an opportunity, especially the business people, they should, it should be mailed to them, so it's not hearsay from the neighbors or whoever they pass on the street. It should, they should be mailed a copy of it to review it and look at it and see what's in it, and therefore have a special city election to vote on it. Because just like the city, as far as I'm concerned, I'm glad the people that's here are here, but it's a pretty poor show-up for what we're talking about, for the amount of money we're talking about. And I attribute that, just my opinion, I attribute that to the fact that it's on a Tuesday evening, it's at 6:00, some people aren't in from work yet, they haven't got home from work, and it needs to be held at a little different time, so that the people have an opportunity to come out. I mean, it's on Tuesday, the paper came out on Monday, I didn't see anything big in the paper saying, hey, we're gonna have a town hall meeting here tomorrow night, why don't you folks show up? We didn't do it on Wednesday, so it couldn't come out in the Wednesday paper with the same thing. So it's, and like I said, as for the firemen, I certainly appreciate everything that they do. I know in the past, and if I'm wrong, somebody tell me I'm wrong, but sometimes when you have an accident or something, and I'm listening on the scanner, we get four or five different departments toned out for a fender bender. You know, not, you know, not that you couldn't have a tractor trailer loaded with gasoline or propane or what have you, but the dispatcher should have a pretty good idea of what the call is for, especially in automobile accidents. And I think we need to, I think we need to look at those things, ways that we can reduce cost, not necessarily reduce service, but reduce cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to make a comment on that gentleman's comment. The ad for this meeting has been on the community board on Channel 3 for at least a week and, two weeks and a half.
Been in the record Delta for two weeks, we've been talking about it for about two months, City Council has. And we can only do so many announcements, and we can only do so many days. Anybody else for the fire fees?
This is a question, where's Channel 3?
Channel 3.
Tannerford.
I'm Channel 3, we're down in Tannerford. The cable system.
Brian, you guys speak, sir?
Yeah, please.
Go Channel 3.
I wanna answer just a few questions. My name is Brian, I'm a paid fireman at Buchanan, so on my days off, I do volunteer like every other fireman in this county. Just to hook up the speed, the gentleman was talking about the grants. I want everybody to realize, we do apply for grants. Right now, we have a grant out trying to get an air ladder. You all may not know this, an air ladder right now to save Buchanan would cost around $1 million. We're running a 1981 Aero right now. How many of you are riding a 30-year-old vehicle to this meeting tonight? One guy, I'm all those. That Aero right now, we've been doing a lot of maintenance, I beg you, or come in and talk to any of us anytime you want to, ask us questions. That truck, like I said, is a 1986 model, we are having multiple issues with it. I hate going home at night worrying to death that someone may be trapped in a house fire and the Aero may not start tonight. We do our best to maintain it, but I just want you to know, we are writing grants, everything we can. The website you're talking about, we have looked on there, there is a reason why they're getting rid of it. There's a fire department I can take care of there right now to show you, that bought four air packs from there. I'm a certified MSA care technician, repairs the air packs, they're not up the NPA standards. So I'm ordering parts for them right now because what they thought was getting a great deal, now they're spending more money to upgrade them to what they're supposed to be. I don't feel that's a good way to spend our money, to buy junk that protects you all. We do buy our new gear when we can, like they said, it costs $10,000 per guy. We are doing fundraisers, last year we did a mud run, and we also did the gun bash, I think is what, if I'm right. That raised only about $8,000 out of both those funds, not enough to even buy a set of gear for one of our men. So we did put that out, it was on Channel 5, had Channel 3, I think, was putting it on the news, different places. So we are trying to do things, I want you to understand that. I joined 10 years ago as a paid fireman, and when I joined, we had 40 volunteers. We answered 200 calls a year. Now, last year, we answered 536 calls for 20 volunteers.
Wow.
So to go out and to say, we need to do more, which I think we do need to be out in the community more, but our volunteers are getting run ragged. They have families, they have jobs, most of them's working two or three jobs, we're asking to go get training all the time. So I just want people to understand, we are trying, we don't wanna blow your old money, that's not what we're here for. We're here to get help because, for example, a while back, we had a bad wreck. I drove, I live in Queens, West Virginia, I live 20 minutes away from town. I drove all the way to the station, the rescue truck was just leaving with confirmed entrapping. That's not acceptable, I don't care who you are. So we've gotta get some people in there to get help. I understand your all situation, I'm a taxpayer too, I can't imagine the taxes you're being asked to pay, but I just want you all to know, we definitely need the help here. It's sad to sit there and think, when I'm leaving out that door, I'm the only one person possibly going out that door at night. And I don't wanna bash our volunteers, we have great volunteers, they do the best they can. But we cannot guarantee you right now, if you have a trappin', if your children or anything's trapped or like that, that we have a fireman to come out and rescue them, and that puts a burden on that, as a paid fireman, I'm telling you, we're a volunteer. That's the last thing everyone sees anybody die in a house fire, it really bothers us bad. So I ask you all to please help us whenever we can, and I'm not saying, police need help, everybody needs help, we all do, we don't want taxes, but I just want you to know the burden we're putting on right now. This week alone, I got 77 hours of just this one week. I've not had any days off since last June. If you take a day off, you're putting a burden on the two men here also right now, they have to come in and cover my 24-hour shift, and I don't think that's right. So I just want you all to know, know the situation we're dealing with. I appreciate your time, thank you.
And we know it.
I'm just gonna be here on Brian real quick, we're not asking for money for a lot of equipment, we're asking for personnel. As Brian said, you know, 10 years ago, we had 39 volunteers, and we ran 278 calls. We're down to rate out 20 volunteers, we're running almost 600 calls. We don't have time to do fundraisers. I mean, when you, if you employed a guy and he had to leave work three times one day to go to fire calls, and that kept reoccurring and recurring every day, three, five times a day, you wouldn't want that, would you? There's only a couple employers around here that allow their employees to leave, one of them's Walmart, okay? The National Guard Armory, George Stump leaves, okay, if it's a bad call. But the only guaranteed person in the city limits right now that you have is me on duty. So if your house catches on fire and you're trapped, it's me. That's the only thing you're guaranteed in the city limits. So, I mean, I've pulled, and I hate to talk about it, but I've pulled people out of house fires by myself, and I, you know, I took this job on, I've been here for 25 years. And until you do that, you don't realize what it's really like. So, you know, I realize you're taxpayers, I'm a taxpayer. I give the county $1,900 for real estate, what do I get for it? This. So I get a sheriff's deputy, which I love the sheriff's department, but I'm not guaranteed anything in the county. Because if I call 911 and my house on fire, other than the Buchanan Fire Department, I'm not guaranteed anything. So, you know, and I live outside the city. So in the city, you're guaranteed one person, and right now, we have two live-in college kids, and like, next week, they're on spring break, they're gone. So you're guaranteed one person right now. So, you know, I feel about taxes, but you look at Clarksburg, but look at Bridgeport. Bridgeport has one of the highest tax bases in the state of West Virginia, highest fire fees, highest everything. Look at that place out by the FBI center, road like a man. Everybody left Clarksburg and went to Bridgeport, but they pay higher taxes, but they have better services. Thank you.
Anybody else on the fire fees? Or police fees? I think, I think the audience, citizens, get a better idea now of the battle that we're fighting internally with our budget, but also trying to make sure that we can supply the best we can, the safety for the citizens. Unfortunately, it's been 30 years, somebody didn't wanna step up to the plate and say, okay, we need an increase in a dollar this year, and five years later, another dollar. It comes down to the point where we have to make an increase that's substantial. Do we like to have to do it? Do we wanna be up there and have to do it? No, but that's who's gonna step up and do it. It's gonna be this council, it's gonna be from voices like you, what you're telling us tonight. Having said that, so we're gonna move on to the comprehensive BNO. We intentionally left out exemption, for a reason, we're not talking about the exemption on the BNO. Mr. Thomas has for years been discussing the comprehensive BNO, and how he feels that it is arbitrary and capricious, because we actually leave out three different parts of the comprehensive BNO tax. Those three being rentals, professional, and agamy or entertainment. Those are the only three in the BNO tax out of 37 categories that are left out. We are the only one of two cities in the state of West Virginia that have such a BNO tax, it's not comprehensive. What we feel is important is that we make it a fair tax, let's get everybody in on it. They staggered it for a reason, the BNO tax, when it started back in the early, mid-'70s, we were the second city, according to Mr. McCully, to initiate the BNO tax, they staggered it for a reason. They only started out with banking and with real estate at the time. Then they moved on about 10 years later and added some more. It's time to close up the loop and make it a comprehensive BNO. Having said that, what I'll do is go to council and ask them for their yea, nay, or undecided.
I think that everyone should pay the same. There shouldn't be any people or places left out to make it fair for everyone. That's how I feel about it.
Thank you. I'm undecided. Sir? This is...
I am too.
Undecided?
I understand the BNO comprehensive, and I understand that from talking with Councilman Thomas and him trying to, with his experience, to educate me as a new member on council, I've done the reading, I've read the ordinance, but you know, I'm a little confused just on the...
Nothing wrong with that. Mrs. Capari?
I like the way we have it right now, I do not like hurting the small businessperson downtown.
All right. And Mr. Thomas?
Well, I've been advocating for years that if you're gonna have a BNO tax, that every segment of the business community should have a fair share in response to what the taxes are. And I understand where CJ was coming from, and that he said that there are entities that possibly would move out of the city limits. I think that's one of the issues we have to deal with long-term for the city, but we do have the million-dollar exemption, and we're not advocating that we change that. I got some opinions on that at some point in time that I'll share with the community. But I do think it's arbitrary and capricious to say to one establishment that you're subjected to a BNO, and the next person or business that may be right next door to you because of the type of business they're in, you're saying, hey, you're not. Everybody's getting a million-dollar exemption, so I don't think it would be onerous in respect to having comprehensive, and I think it's a principle that I think I'm very strongly opinionated on. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I will open the floor to any of the citizens who would like to have the podium.
My name is Lance Corey. I have a financial services business in town, and I pay BNO tax, as though I'm a financial institution. As hard as I've fought that over the years, it's a fact. I have to mention exemption because, we talked about a million-dollar exemption on sales, I presume it's on gross sales. My exemption for the year is $10, and my biggest decision is, do I take it in the first quarter or spread it out to $2.05 cents each quarter? And then I pay 1% on my gross revenue from the first dollar after the $10. I don't, I'm not up here to pull everyone into this, pull everyone into the BNO tax conclave, or whatever you wanna call it.
Debate.
But what I am saying is that when it's done, it needs to be equitable. I don't know an equivalency of the million-dollar exemption versus the $10 exemption, but I would like to see some equivalent drawn up. That's really the essence of what I want to say, you know, because I'm in, and the other thing is, from an administrative, ministerial standpoint, I think it would be, once this is done, it's incumbent upon the city and the city administrators to determine that everyone that should be paying is paying. I suspect, from talking to people, that not everyone in my classification is paying. And that's just my own suspicion, I don't, I don't have any facts. But it needs to be equitable, and it needs to be designed and drafted to show equity for all the parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go on behalf of a small business.
We know you're young.
What a lot of people probably don't know is, for example, whimsical treasures, the crowning touch, Diane's Hallmark, stores like ours, when we get merchandise in, we have to pay sales tax on it. Then, when we sell it, we have to collect sales tax and pay it again. For a small business in a town like Buchanan, it's just about all we can do, because you have to keep getting new stuff in, you have to be getting... have to keep getting new stuff in, you have to be getting, especially with clothing, the newest, the latest, and then you've got to, you have to offer it to the public at a price that they feel is a fair deal, although a lot of them would like to see it at a better-than-fair deal. Well, I don't know how gift shops do it, but in clothing retail, we are required, I have to sign contracts with these different companies, that we are required to use a certain markup, and we cannot deviate from that going down in price. Now, we can take it as high as we want. I can take a dress that would sell for $200, and if I can get 800 out of it, all the better. But I can't sell it for 150. After I've had it so long, then I might be able to run a sale, but right off the bat, I can't drop it down. Do some of my competitors in other towns do that? I don't know. I know there's at least one that has been loaning dresses out to certain people, but that's, that's the only thing I know. What I do know is that between our sales tax, the cost of our inventory, heaven help anybody that needs employees, they've got to pay, it's all we can do. If it weren't for Terry's Paycheck, my store probably wouldn't have been open the first two years. So, I go getting hit with the BNO tax, I don't know how long I can be around. And again, I'm going to say, you know, right off the top of my head, going down Main Street, you've got whimsical treasures, and regular jewelry. I'd be curious to see what Jake does compared to, say, Kay Jewelry at the Metta Brook Mall. You know, this is a small town. Small businesses can't take a hit like that. I mean, I realize that the city needs money. I realize that there are things that have to be paid. But if you don't have money, you don't have money. And so I would sincerely hope that, you know, do I think everything should be fair? Yes, I do think everything should be fair. I also think that, you know, there are some places that have access to a lot more money than others do. I mean, that would almost be like putting a sales tax on the food that they let the seniors have at the senior center. I mean, they wouldn't have the money either, because that's done by donation. So, you know, do we stay in business, or do we close? And that's what it's going to come down to. So, before you do anything, I would hope that each one of the members of council would look at a map, see how many small businesses are within the city limits, and drive around and make, make their individual notes. Which ones do they want to lose? Because that, you're going to lose some businesses.
Can I say something?
No. I have...
No.
He said no.
Hello, I'm Carl Martin. Everyone, you might know me as Robbie Martin. As Lisa just was talking about, you might lose some businesses with tax increases. You know, you're thinking about increasing taxes, and I'm, if you don't know, I'm a member of the Board of Education here. And I feel that, you know, if we lose businesses, we're going to lose a tax base for the school system. And with that, I, you know, I don't want, I don't want this to hurt the school system any. So, I'm a big advocate, of course, you know, that's my main priority, is being elected official on that. So, I just want to bring that point up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that, I know that, I know what council's going to want to say, but I'll go ahead and...
Ladies, there one more.
Is there anybody else?
Please.
Yes, come on. Press the mic round. Open light, mate.
All right, y'all wake up back there. You were sleeping.
So, I'm not a business owner in town. Robert Hitten, Waukesha County Development Authority. I'm talking on behalf of what I guess am charged to do. What's that?
Who are you?
Robert Hitten, Waukesha County Development Authority.
Thank you.
I just did that. Like Groundhog Day.
I knew that was going.
So, with, you know, I'm charged with making sure that we can retain the businesses that we have, bring the resources that are needed for the businesses that we have to thrive and grow and be more profitable and run more efficiently, as well as attract new businesses, recruit new restaurants, retail, manufacturing, whatever it may be. The bottom line is, if you don't have businesses, you don't have jobs. If you don't have jobs, you don't have people. If you don't have people, you don't have a community. So, if we back all the way up, you got to have businesses, and businesses have to be profitable. I was in business for about five years. Had the fortune of opening a business, also had the fortune of crashing a business. So, but the thing is, is that one thing that you have to understand, and if you've never owned a business, if you've never taken the risk, you have to understand the amount of risk that an entrepreneur takes, and the initiative and the self-drive it takes to keep that business open, and to keep every morning going in knowing that your worst, sometimes as a business owner, your worst day is payday, because most likely, you're not getting paid, and you're writing checks. But fortunately, you get to a point where you're able to write a check to yourself. But if we increase the cost of doing business, especially for businesses that are marginal, micro businesses that line our downtown, that they're not making six figures by opening that business, they're, they're making a living, probably. But as we add costs, as we add costs from a standpoint of top-line taxes, basically top-line, we're taking it off the revenue, we're not taking it off profit. So that's, that's cutting into their profit margin. That's cutting into their money that they can use to reinvest in the business, make it better, or just have a better lifestyle from their standpoint, from taking that risk. If we don't have people like that, that we're willing to take the risk, we don't encourage that, you're going to start to see a windowless downtown area. What was the other thing? The other thing, home rule, okay? I was in Bridgeport when you guys did the home rule. My understanding, based on that presentation, is that the city's administration was not looking at increasing BNO or moving towards a more comprehensive BNO, they were actually looking at a plan to remove BNO. But they were also looking at a plan to reduce taxes on businesses to encourage new businesses to come in, to encourage the businesses that are there by enterprise zones to be able to thrive and have a better business environment. So, my only thing is that as we were awarded home rule from the state of West Virginia, which is a gift, make sure we use it correctly. That's all.
Can I just say, the other, am I understanding it right? When we're looking at small businesses, we're not looking at, oh, shoot, we're not looking at one increase. We're looking at an increased fire fee, an increased police fee, and a BNO tax.
No, I don't want that.
But I, I mean, that's what we're looking at? I mean, that's, well, probably, and I had a gift basket business, and Walmart came in, and, and like I said, I had a gift basket business, and enough said, probably. But that wasn't really the only reason, we just went in different directions. That would be a concern, that if you're looking at not one, not two, but three increased fees or taxes, or whatever you want to look at, that is, and I'm not in that small business now, but I would not want to crush, you know, every little bit, because some of them are hanging on by a thread, trust me. I would not want to see those small businesses that are the lifeblood of our downtown be in a position to close their doors. That would, that would be sad, because we do have a, I'd like to see more businesses, not less, but...
You know, you rehearsed actually what this council's been trying to do for so many years. We are so very proud of our downtown right now and the full windows that we have. There is no reason at all that you should believe that this council is in any way looking to actually reduce that in any way. Something else that I would add, that as we've been speaking, we're not discussing the exemption, but that exemption is still there at a million dollars. There are not very many small businesses that make a million dollars or more. You've got to make a million dollars before you even hit that BNO tax. Then, even at the higher levels, which there may be one or two people in this room that may hit, there's a deduction on that thousand, on that million. So, it equals itself out. I just want to make sure we understand that, so you don't believe that we're trying to destroy small businesses, because that's quite the opposite of what we're trying to do. Unless you're making a million dollars as a mom-and-pop store, more power to you, I'd like to find some of that energy to do that as well, but that is not what we're trying to do with this at all. In fact, this council, again, I will reiterate, has made no decisions. We are trying to find out the most equitable way to go about this and hear what you have to say. I've only heard, though, one person say, "Leave it alone," and that was on our BNO tax or the fire fee. One person has said, "Just leave it alone, we don't need anything, it's either been for or against." So, I will ask that some people, do we just want to leave it as it is? Now, moving on to, a very tenacious argument that's been going on within City Council and city residents, and that is our ALPR issue, automatic license plate readers. We have had it in service now for going on a year. There have been no hits, according to the police department, or arrests made because of this technology. The council made a decision last year, it's not everyone that was on this council, to maintain status quo. Mr. Q has asked that we bring it back up before the citizens again, to see if that's what she would like, or if he'd rather have us take it out. So having said that, I will actually ask council their opinions, yea, yea, or undecided, and then we'll go to the floor.
I have mixed feelings about the ALPR. From what I understand, and in newspapers and the Wall Street Journal, the information ain't going right to Homeland Security. So, in some way, that's an invasion of our, of our privacy. However, if I had a child that was kidnapped, and I was desperately trying to find that child, I would say, "Yes, use whatever you can do to find my child." But, so I'm undecided, however, I'm leaning more towards going away with it, because in a year's time, we haven't had one hit.
Thank you, Mrs. Simon. Mr. Q.
How many hours do I have to give my appointment?
Two minutes.
Three minutes.
I think everybody here that knows me well knows that I am against the ALPR, and I have been since the beginning, and strictly because it is an invasion upon our privacy. Give you a little rundown, the little cameras, three of them, I think, on, on the vehicle, goes by your car and it takes, it takes a picture of your license plate and surrounding areas. It also takes, at that point, a GPS reading, so it knows exactly where this particular car with that particular license plate has been. Six hours later, runs past it again, it takes another picture of it, and then another picture several hours later. What it does, it can develop a pattern as to what that particular vehicle has been doing, and it can trace you, and I think this is illegal against the Constitution. It comes against our, the Sixth Amendment, probably all of us, if you go right down to it, I think even women could vote on it, if they wanted to. But this information was originally developed by the FBI, and it was to use in a case like, like Robin said, if you have a BOLO, or if you have a child for an Amber Alert, they would put that license plate out there nationwide, and, and give every law enforcement officer a very good chance of picking up someplace within the nation, that particular license plate. And then Homeland Security got a hold of it, and they took it one step further, and the fact that they were using it to track people. They were, and they admitted this, it's not hearsay anymore. They admitted they were doing this, and they've since recently said, "Yes, and we're doing it more. We get the information from the state units, and we use it to track individuals." My friends, I don't think that is right, and I don't think that here in Buchanan, well, we have one free, and tell me when the federal government has ever given you anything for free that was really free. If we took this, and we're giving up our freedom for it. I think that it should be removed from the cruisers, only one cruiser, and I don't think that there should be that much of a question about it. Of course, I'm very passionate about this, and I have been before, and I appreciate your listening, I would like to hear your output.
Input. Thank you, Mr. Q.
Well, I can say for once that I totally agree with Councilman Q.
Oh, my.
I believe it's, first of all, when we, I wasn't on council when this came into the police department, but I do believe it was Chief Gregory acquired it and, and put it into place. Grant funds was the way it was...
There were no funds.
There were no funds? There was no funds?
No.
Like you said, somebody paid for it. Anyways, I, I think it's a violation of our property, of my personal rights and any of our citizens. I don't think it's anything that we need in a small town of Buchanan. I think a recommendation from council should be to the police department is to remove it and give it to maybe somebody in Bridgeport, or some other, or wherever, in a larger city where they've got a lot more traffic on the interstates, if they can follow the drug people, and leave us alone.
So that's an against the ALPR?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Capari?
Well, I, I disagree.
Okay.
And I think we did get one hit on a stolen vehicle, right?
We did get a hit, nor a rest.
Okay, right.
It was an erroneous.
Well, I have nothing to hide, so if anybody wants to do my license plate, I don't care. I have nothing to hide. And if you have a cellphone, if anybody has a cellphone, you can get information from anybody you need, if you own a cellphone. And if you really want to get information on anybody, you can get it, whether you take a picture of your license plate or not.
You are giving permission for them to do that.
I'll get you Mr. Thomas and Mr. Q through.
No flipping.
Mr. Thomas, what do you got, sir?
No flip-flopping, Dave. I'm sorry, I had to do it.
Thanks a lot. Well, I do flip-flop occasionally. The, I'm probably the oldest person in this room, and, you know, our constitutional rights are being gradually deteriorated over a couple hundred years. 9/11 really transformed this country, unfortunately. I see both sides of the argument. The last council meeting that we discussed this thoroughly was that we would listen to the input from our residents and citizens, and then take this up again July the 1st of this year to, I hope, make the final decision whether to reaffirm it or disabandon it. I think there are many issues that law enforcement, this is simply one aspect of it. Our chief thought it would provide a safer community for our citizens. I know there's very strong opinions opposed to it. I think, I want to take it, wait till July the 1st, when we said we would take a look at that again. I appreciate people's comments. I think we got a lot of issues in regard to how we make this a safer community, and not just this one particular issue, and how to be cost-effective also. I have a lot of strong opinions about that, and I'm looking forward to additional town meetings so that we can discuss those issues, and I appreciate everybody's opinion on this.
Thank you, Dave. Cam, did you want to add something to your comment?
I just want to ask if, if he would care to make a suggestion, or what his opinion is, our former...
Who?
Mr. J.C. Rafferty.
Ah.
Cam, being an FBI agent, I...
We will allow Mr. Rafferty, if he feels so inclined, to, to give his opinion on how he feels about it.
Did he sign up to speak?
I'm not sure if he has or not, but if Mr. Rafferty feels the need to come up and speak, I'm sure he will, we don't need to encourage him. What I do want to say is, I'm undecided on this. I will tell you this, though, I have three teenage daughters. I take the license plates of each one of those boys that come picking them up to take out on the road. I'm very happy to know where that ALPR is. Having said that, I'll open the floor to anybody, the citizens that like to discuss the ALPR, sir.
Mayor, about when this was being considered, I believe that you took an informal call on Facebook. And you tell us how that turned out, please.
I had a 75% response to negative on the ALPR.
Would the council not be willing to listen to the will of the people?
That's what we're here for, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Can you tell me how many people it would have been?
How many people would have what?
Made responses.
I had 90 responses.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
I'm very popular on Facebook.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
No.
About the people?
No, it's the citizens' turn. I would ask if the citizens would like to speak on the floor, they have the floor now.
Really?
Okay, Steve.
Cam, not ordering the fire department, I'm ordering the previous issue, but I was a volunteer EMT for five years. I know what it's like to volunteer. I'm also retired Army, 24 years, so appreciate your service. However, don't discredit the GSA program, the Federal Property Screener. That's what I do for a living, and there's amazing stuff out there.
I'll get you a volunteer application.
I'm Al State Department. But if you call me, I'll help you find a property, okay? Okay, on the license plate reader. How many crimes is this solved? We know none. I think what we have here is a police chief saw a big city police department with an ALPR like New York Police Department or Los Angeles Police Department or something like that, and thought Buchanan needed that too, that we will look big and important like they are. But LAPD and New York PD also has helicopters and river patrol boats. When is our police chief going to want that next? That's a waste of money and it's a violation of our privacy.
You didn't get the chopper free, though, you said.
Yeah, so I really don't think we need a license plate reader. It might be free this year, but the price will come up someday, and it's going to cost us money to maintain it. That's all.
Anybody else on the ALPR issue?
What's your feelings on the ALPR?
I am, ethically, I'm opposed to it. I believe that the Fusion Center, if it were to stay within the state of West Virginia and used for our community, then yes, I'm 100% for it, but it goes to Fusion Center and it leaves there and nobody knows where it goes. I don't like that. I do understand that the government has and has been keeping track of folks, and any biorythmic IT person can take all the numbers that are taken from that information that's gathered and make a pattern out of it and use it to whatever will they want.
And it's kept indefinitely?
As far as we know, it is kept indefinitely from, we only know what it goes to the Fusion Center from there. Our agreement goes nowhere else, and that goes out of state.
Like one of the clouds that's there forever?
Yes, sir. Anybody can have access.
So yes, I'm opposed to it, except, of course, unless my daughters are out with some other thing, then it's really likely.
What's small comment?
I'll tell you what I'm going to do. Now that we've gone through the process, we've talked our major things, I think we can get a little less formal now. We went through a lot of that faster than I thought. What I would like to do, though, because I guess as you guys have been sitting here and watching, I have a bunch of council members that are really wishing that they could have a few comments to make in rebuttal to a few things that you guys probably, citizens, have said. I will ask council, though, please remember that this is, I'm going to give you a chance to do the comments, but please remember that we are going to make these discussions a part of our council meeting on Thursday. Please keep it very brief, and if you're trying to correct something that was stated before, make the comment, make the statement, and then so we can move on to the rest, which is the other on our agenda. I will start to my left this time with Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas, sir, have you got anything you would like to say to the audience while we're here?
Well, I wanted to respond to Lisa's comments about the small business enterprises. We're not suggesting at all that we're going to eliminate the $1 million exemption. So that would, we're looking in regard to the BNO, simply comprehensive or not comprehensive. And I think 87% of the business enterprises within our community don't meet the $1 million. They're under $1 million, so they're not paying any BNO tax, and they would not expect it to be paying a BNO tax.
Thank you. Cam, got anything briefly you want to add or correct that you've heard so far?
I just want to say that my opinions is what I feel the majority of people that I have talked to believe in, and I've got to think of the whole town as a whole, not just a handful of people that come and make comments to me against things. I have to look at it as a whole for the whole community, not just for a few people.
Thank you, Pam. Mrs. Alba?
I just want to say two things, maybe three. I'm all for small business. I like to see that, I want to see and in the future, continue to see the city of Buchanan, Main Street, to change and grow and prosper the way it has been changing because I see wonderful things there. Mr. Hinton, I appreciate your comments, but I think he was a boo-boo on that one about home rule, but I don't know for sure, but I'll look it up when I get home. And the other thing is, I'm not, I'd like to know how many of our residents here live in the city, and if you live in the city, I'd like to ask you if you're for or against the ALPR. I'm against. I'm a resident of the city of Buchanan.
Is this a no vote?
This is a no vote. We don't need it.
How many was it? Who counted? I couldn't see.
Mary, I have a question. You're saying that live in the city, every one of us drive through the city.
Okay, so how many, how many of you are against the ALPR?
That's pretty good.
Don't want you asking me.
How many is four?
We got next to it.
How many four?
How many four?
Three.
Undecided.
Yeah, how many undecideds?
How many don't give a crap?
How many chickens have put their hand up one way or another?
Thank you. Mr. Hinton had a question, but I should come before.
I just have one comment. To clarify, raising hands, how many were in Bridgeport when Mike did this presentation? Okay? So my comment was a quote from Michael Doss, which was, "BNO is a regressive tax. I would like to get away from BNO," and what we have here is our next pillar, which is Enterprise Zone. That is my comment, because we present something to the state and we present a vision, yet we're here tonight to discuss moving in an opposite direction. So I understand the comment of yes, BNO, no, BNO, comprehensive BNO, no, BNO, but what I'm saying is, is that when we say one thing to get a program that other cities got turned down, and then we do another once we have that program, I think that we need to be very careful. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. And your quote is correct. It's a little out of context, but it is absolutely correct. Having said that, Mr. Pugh, what you got?
Well, let's see.
He's on here to defend himself.
For one thing about the, comparing the ALPR to your cell phones is just apples to oranges. You elect to have the cellphone. It's yours. You buy it, you know what they can do with it. We didn't elect to have the ALPR. It was brought in and forced on us. I realize that there may be a case someday, and there has been one or two, that have been out with Amber Alerts and everything, but they just don't pan out. If I had a child that was, I would want every way possible to find that child. But the thing of it is, you can put out an Amber Alert for a vehicle and everything like that, or somebody says a sex offender that lives in your neighborhood, you could track them. You can't track those people because you can't put their license plates on there unless they have committed a crime. And since they're served their time, then they have not committed any crimes now. The, I lost my train here someplace. It must have gone down the river. But anyway, I can't see that it's anything except a taking away of our liberties and everything, and that's been done enough in this country in the last four years, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Mr. Simons, how about you?
Well, I've stood here and I've listened. I've heard everybody. I'm so impressed with the quality of intelligence and information. What I think really doesn't matter is what, I represent you all. I have to vote the way the majority of the people that live in Buchanan want me to. So I have, I'm just so impressed and so thankful for each and every one of you that's come out. You may have changed my mind on a few things. I'm not going to say what right now, but thank you and thank you again for your input. I've enjoyed this.
Thank you, Mrs. Simons, and I'll echo you. It's fantastic to see all these great faces here tonight. Now, one last thing. We have other in our agenda, and what that is, if you want to talk about the dog ordinance, if you want to talk about potholes, you want to talk about streets, you want to talk about street lights, you want to talk about how bad the BNO tax, if we were to do it, we're able to make downtown pave better. We're looking at the bicentennial, 2016, next year. There's a discussion of a bicentennial plaza or a plaza there on Spring Street. If you have anything else that you would like to bring forward to this council, any suggestions for us, now would be the time to do it, and I would encourage you to do so. Dr. Reed, you're always encouraging me to do so.
This probably is initially an unpopular suggestion for many people. We have a city, we have a county. I think we need to continually look at cooperative possibilities between the two and wherever possible, eliminate duplication. A suggestion I've had for a number of years, initially I was told it wasn't possible legally, is that people want the privilege of water. I say that when we sign for water, we ought to, at the same time, be signing for permission for sewer when the population density requires that. And when the sewer goes in, we automatically become part of the city as annexation. That's the part that would be unpopular, I know. But I think that if we look at the possibilities and study what the advantages may be, that may offset some of the negative feelings. Second thought, talked about the fire departments. I think that throwing out some information about costs of equipment like we did a little bit tonight, but more so, would be good for the general population, and I think addressing the issue of, many of the volunteer departments around the county are depending on bingo. The state legislature this year has looked at the possibility of waiving indoor smoking requirements for certain institutions. Maybe that's the opportunity for the fire departments or other people to promote that they are smoke-free and do their thing. Thank you.
Take a bad penny, right? It's a whip dog just saying, you know, about annexation. And we've been doing a little study, and Steve Foster's leading up this little group to talk about that. So we did an analysis of it, and for basically about $150,000 house of assessed value, costs about $380 additional a year to come into city limits. So this is, as a residence or as an individual, you know, we'd just be cognizant that every fee and tax that's added on is a discouragement to come into city limits. Now, as far as a business, you know, I guess that would be up to the city if they want to, you know, part of the negotiation to say, "Hey, we'll run you a sewer line here, but you're coming in." You know, that would be a case-by-case decision. I think some of those kind of got away from us when they were extending it out to the west, but I don't question any businesses, you know, evaluating those long-term costs. In the comprehensive plan, when it was written, we had several conversations with city planners from other communities, and all of those, I think it was Fairmont and Bridgeport possibly, that they all have grant writers, and it's recommended in our comprehensive plan for the city to hire a grant writer. Right now, currently, the firemen talked about writing grants. I've been involved in writing grants within our, you know, community group, and for me, trying to do that is a waste of energy and time because it's a very specific skill that I don't have. And if we're asking our department heads to write grants, they're not managing their department during that time. It's ineffective use of time. And just a little insight, for, when we talked at Fairmont, they had a grant writer that was, the base salary was about $35,000 a year. One year, that brought in $4.2 million. At no point in a five-year period were they under 20 times their gross annual pay coming back in in budget. Not only in supporting the department heads, but in researching and combining what is available and what's happening. A lot of time, grants have a very short and specific time to respond, and if you're not prepared and you're not professional, I mean, it's not going to happen. So, you know, consider that, you know, an investment to address that issue, and I think it could help a lot of other things, you know.
What's that, CJ?
Anyone else for the good? Sir? Ray? Or Jeff?
Steve Goff again. I want to talk about your dog ordinance. I addressed this body 14 years ago. Because in the dog ordinance, we got into breed specific, which I told was wrong, but nobody listened to me. You also outlawed snakes over six feet long, and there's a fine for take for having a snake over 16 feet long. I'd love to know how many tickets you wrote for people have violated that rule in 14 years. So.
We're afraid to come up to them.
I don't think people having pet snakes is a threat to the community. I have a pet snake, and he's a friendly little snake, and he doesn't go out and wander the street or anything, sit there in the aquarium and just looks at you.
How big is he?
Four feet. So, see, I'm under. But you guys will probably change it a couple years now, down to two-feet snakes. So why are we worrying about pet snakes? Okay? I violated the city council rule, by the way, when I took my big snake through the city limits, down to the Boy Scout camp, and the Cub Scouts played with him all day long. You know, didn't hurt a thing. But it's ridiculous. So back on the breed specific, on the dogs.
Actually, Steve, didn't one of your snakes bite your then-wife on the head?
Yep.
And that snake was longer than four feet, wasn't it?
Yeah, and my wife loves telling that story, too.
Yes, but it was trying to get the family cat, wasn't it?
Let's go back to something else. What I'm talking about is the dog ordinance, okay? The last time I was bitten by a dog was a little ankle-biter dog, okay? And I don't put any presence into what the Centers of Disease Control says about their dog bites and stuff like that, because I don't, you know, this is ridiculous, okay? But trying to regulate pets is ridiculous. You hold them liable for their pets' actions and that's it. Leave the city out of it.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to talk to you about your dog ordinance. Tell us something. I have a big issue over in North Buckland about the dogs and the cats, and I haven't been talking to them as long as Mr. Goff has in 14 years, but I did call, they went through the chain of command like I was supposed to. Yesterday, I had to call the city council twice, and five minutes after the cops left, the dogs are back out again. So what do I do?
You know what? And I didn't want to, we're in the middle, if you notice, we're in the middle of addressing that. There was not a form or a proper process.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to talk to you about your dog ordinance. Tell us something. Uh, I have a big issue over in North Buckland about the dogs and the cats. And I haven't been talking to them as long as Mr. Goff has, in fourteen years, but, uh, I did call, they went through the chain of command like I was supposed to. Uh, yesterday, I had to call the city council twice, and five minutes after the cops left, the dogs is back out again. So, what do I do? You know what?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And, 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 and I didn't want to, we're in the middle, if you notice, we're in the middle of addressing that. There was not a form or a proper process to, uh, charge anybody specifically on any dog running that large or even a dangerous dog. What we have done, and the council will be next Thursday, approving a form that the police will use, and it will be a way for us to backtrack any of the reports that are made from citizens, and a process for a second look at if anything happens again. So that will be a form that they will be doing on the consent agenda to process it to the next stage, which is actually, how do we enforce it, and what are the fines going to be for someone who's a repeat offender? And ultimately, can they lose their property, in this case, their pets, if it is a multi-rep offense?
Well, the city police told the common center on Iowa scanner, and they said that they warned the owner that the next time they were called, their dog would be picked up. They hope he don't run.
Oh, yeah, but unfortunately, the person that would pick up the dog isn't, isn't employed anymore. So there is no official dog catcher for Uptown County at this point that I'm aware of. Um, the last one, I think, quit or resigned, retired about a month or two ago. So now, I think in the process, from what I saw...
We have on Thursday's schedule a motion to hire.
I was going to say, I didn't want to, because I can't say if you're going to hire, but there is only...
Tell me again.
And after that, we can start picking up the animals again, as far as the dogs. We do have an official cat catcher for the city, though, if you want to know about.
Yeah, I was also told that not catching more cats, I've caught too many.
You got your limit?
Yeah.
We are working on the dog ordinance, and I have one of our board members with us tonight that's been working very hard on it. Again, this is something that, it was implemented in two thousand and one. It was speed breed specific to pit bulls. That is no longer relevant in this time and age. And again, it's something that's been pushed off by city council or anybody else, and we're having to deal with it. Maria, did you want to say something? She's the one that's our, oh, you're just being recognized.
So I'm here if you have any questions. We're drafting several changes.
So we are, and we are looking at that ordinance very well. And the one thing I'm very proud of, we can't have any snakes down at, um, Jabon Bar. That will be something that, unfortunately, your snake will have to stay home for that event, but maybe we can find another one or something. Dogs? Dogs, no. Well, we're going to have to be discussing that, and we don't want to get into debate on that as well.
I know one more little issue I'd like to talk to you about is, uh, the Cleveland Avenue Bridge that started up with the state.
Yeah.
And they go down Cleveland, cross the bridge, and, uh, on First Street. That stayed rid, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, you have a sign over on Fifth Street, no trucks. You have a small sign at Cleveland Avenue Bridge, no trucks. Well, they're not doing it because they took a forklift down there last winter, and they had to pick the back of the trailer up to get it around the corner of Cleveland Avenue and Fifth Street.
Can't clear it, right?
They can't clear it, no. But they need bigger signs and bigger enforcement over there, and they can't...
Smart trucks. Uh, we're, we're going to the bigger side, that's, we're going to go.
Thank you.
We go there at, uh, one thirty-five, and you'll see the milk, milk truck go through there. It's a truck and trailer. Goes right down Cleveland Avenue every morning.
And at two o'clock in the morning, they come to us.
I'm up at two o'clock in the morning.
Sir?
My name is Robert Gompers. I'm a resident of Uptown County. I am pro-law enforcement and I'm pro-fire player. Um, however, um, I am not pro-licensed plate reader. Um, I am not pro-BNO tax, and, uh, well, I'm in the landscaping business, and I've worked in a lot of areas that have the BNO taxes, and I don't have a business downtown or in the city limits or anything. But I can tell you that when I go to these places and work that have the BNO taxes, you know, it's hard for me as a contractor to, to justify to my customers, you know, that it's going to cost you an extra two percent on top of what it really should cost you, you know, to do this, because, uh, that's just the way it is. So, a lot of times contractors and business owners end up having to kind of eat that, and, uh, you know, being, being, uh, having a small business is tough enough already, so I would try not to impose any, any new taxes, and, uh, you know, I, I would, I would be pro-getting rid of BNO tax. So, um, you know, as far as the fire fees and stuff goes, uh, we can bring that up again. But, uh, you know, the city, you know, I don't know for sure, but if, uh, if we had some extra money, you know, left over from the budget, you know, last year, some carryovers, some rainy day fund, stuff like that, you know, I feel like, you know, if our fire department is in, is in the shape that what these guys are saying that it's in, that we should probably be doing something pretty immediately to help remedy this situation, and even if it's not jacking everybody's fire fees up, uh, if we've got some extra money, I think that's a pretty important part, component of our community, and I think that we ought to do what we can to, to come to some resolution pretty soon on that.
Thanks, Bobby. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, please.
Paul, his comments and other gentlemen's. Uh, metro government, everybody knows how that works. The county and city work together to provide service, and I don't know why, in a small community, our communities can't do that.
Amen.
I don't understand that. If Louisville and Lexington and all these big cities can do it, well, I can't, Uptown County, West Virginia, do it. Second of all, the fire department, if you all have questions, we're down there. Stop by. Come down and see what we have. See the guys. See the equipment. See what we need to replace, why we need more people. You know, understand your insurance rating is based on the fire department, the water system, the communication system. You know, there's a lot of information out there, and once you get off the street, ninety-nine percent of it is false. So, come down. We're all highly educated in the fire service. I've been there twenty-five years. You know, Joey's been there ten, twelve years. Mitch has been in the fire service thirty years. We will answer your questions. Don't feel that the fire department's, you're not allowed to go down there. You know, there's, there's a handful of people in here that have been to the Buchanan Fire Department, including council members, that don't even know what we have and what we need. So, you know, it, it's harder for us, this is the only way we can provide the information to you all, is in meetings like this, unless you want to stop by the firehouse. That's the only way we can do it. I can't go to your house and talk to you, and I can't go to your house and talk to you unless it's on fire. And I don't think you want that to happen at that point. So, you know, all fire departments are in the game for the same reason, is to provide a good service to their community. Uh, the Buchanan community is the largest community in Uptown County, and it is part of Uptown County. I had a, or a commissioner say one time that Buchanan was not part of Uptown County. So, I would like to see the line, the line in the sand between the city and the county disappear, and let's move on. You know, it's two thousand and fifteen. There's no reason why we cannot look at more of metro government and save the community's money, so.
Here, here.
JB, are you guys still using that old hand plumper down there?
Arms retired from last night.
I'd like to elaborate on a couple of the things. I feel bad getting back up here. I cut myself off early last time. Uh, you guys are talking about fundraisers, and I understand where you all are coming from, okay? We, we, we've taken on a variety of different fundraisers. We try. We do. Don't, don't think the effort isn't there. We also have more training regulations imposed upon us. The more regulations we get pushed on us, the more fundraising we get pushed on us, guess what happens to our volunteers?
It goes down.
It goes down. We went from thirty-nine in two thousand and three...
Twenty.
To twenty. We almost cut ourselves in half in eleven years. What's going to happen in eleven more if we have none? How are you guys going to remedy that? I, I, I mean, I, that's a question I can't answer, because the city of Buchanan, I'll tell you, cannot afford a paid fire department. We know that. We're not asking for that. You, you can't afford a paid municipal fire department. So be aware that whenever you push fundraising issues on volunteers, you're going to continue to push them away. We're very, we're very cautious in the services that we take on. You know, a lot of people have said, why aren't you running EMS calls? We don't run EMS calls unless they're by request only. We don't do any transport. We do some treatment that is very limited. It comes out to usually less than two dozen a year, and it's because of that. We don't want to run people off. We don't want to take on more than what we can handle. And I really want to echo JB's comment about the line of saying, JC, I, I hate to come to you on this, but every time that we go to something to the county, or the county comes to the city, we hear about a line. That line gets drawn internally in our organization a lot of times, or it comes to financial stuff, because we have a volunteer department, some people want to point out, and we have a paid fire department. We don't have a paid fire department. If you guys want to look at that this way, but you don't, because if the volunteers decide not to show up tomorrow, guess what? You might have three guys. You might have four. That's the way it stands right now. And we, by our rules of engage, engagement that are pushed upon us by standards, we can't do hardly anything with that manpower, especially by the time that it would arrive. So while you guys are also looking at ways to bring in funds, to possibly hire more, encourage people to become volunteers, don't do things that will run them off, and, you know, let's, let's look at ways to help our volunteers. And, and JC, I hope that falls on yours too in the back of the room. I know you guys don't have any control like people think you do over the fire fee in the county, but we've got to find a solution. We absolutely have to. So, thank you all.
If I could address one comment, it may be, you know, inviting people down there to see that, just like this format is a little easier, maybe, for citizens. You're not sitting up there like judges, and there's a little less roles, and, you know, maybe, but it's, it's intimidating. And so maybe you have a open house, I don't know, don't put a lot of effort into it, and invite, but it might not yield a lot of results, but, you know...
We tried that. CJ, we did an open house two years ago.
No, it was long enough, seven years ago.
Seven years.
It has been a while.
And, and we put, we went through, took the time to put the amount each piece of equipment cost, the stuff hanging in the trucks, cost, the whole nine yards. Zero people showed up.
Right. But it's not how great the effort, it's how long you keep at it. Maybe spend less time and energy and make a casual attempt and invite, personally invite people, and maybe leaves people would come.
The Fire Academy is the best thing that's ever happened to that fire thing that's been on.
Citizens' Fire Academy.
Citizens' Fire Academy, and that has been going downhill, too.
Yeah, I don't know how many people they have involved this year, but it...
The first one it did, I remember Gary Hebron.
It started going downhill when the state took it over.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I wasn't going to say.
Mr. Gompers, what do you have for us, sir?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify one thing that I said. I said I didn't want to see everybody's fire fee get jacked up, and I just want to clarify that, uh, I realize fire fees need to come up a little bit, because there hasn't been a rate increase, but I think that we just need to really take a hard, hard look at how it's going to impact everybody, and make sure it's done fairly and, and slowly. But, you know, in, in the meantime, if we had some extra money, we need to help the dogs out.
Something I've always said, and I told CJ this last time, while we're going through the bureaucratic part of this, I'm still going to fires by myself.
Amen.
So, just to let you know that.
Well, I need to clarify as well that the police department's under, and police and fire department are under very special rules and regulations. As much as I want to get them a fireman within two weeks, I can't. There's something called the Fireman's Civil Service and Commission and the Police Civil Service Commission. Minimum, minimum, to get a firefighter through that process, that's the first two tests, to even get to the probationary fireman part, is a month and a half process. That's if they even make it all. We've been through the process twice now, Terry and I are going through as commissioners on that. We had one candidate. Once it didn't work out, had to start all over again. You have to have a list of five candidates before you can even start the process. So unfortunately, it's not that easy when it comes to police and fire as perhaps hiring a building code enforcement person or a city attorney. Not that those are easy as well, but they're not regulated by the state and by civil service as much as those departments are. So that's one reason why we can't just snap our hands and have firemen.
Probably appropriate to manage.
Well, and that brings me to the next question that people keep talking about, and that's our rainy day fund. There's a reason for that rainy day fund, because, not unlike what happened in, uh, what, last summer, when Wesleyan's pump, booster station pump busted at Brook Street, because of the PSC, the utilities, and don't forget, we have four that the city oversees or is a part of, the water department in this case, had to get a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars loan from the city of Buchanan, because the PSCs from the state level will not allow a utility to keep that much money on the side for repairs. Now, let's just say that one station goes down and another one goes down. All the time, though, we have a flood that comes up. Where do you think that money's going to come from to make sure that we have relief? That's that rainy day fund, folks. It's not there unless we have to have a major emergency, then we use it. I'm not, we're not the only entity with that kind of a fund as well that we're using. So I want to keep that in mind as well. Um, having said that, I think either we're going to take a break, or if everybody feels that they've said enough, we can move on, and I will give council an opportunity to express how you feel for tonight, before we do that.
Thank you. So, do we have more questions for the audience? Patrick?
I'm just curious on the, uh, the three dollars, I think that's really not, not very much. I think that's fine. But is this going to, how much funds is this going to raise? And is it going to be enough for them? And also on the, well, that's my first question, you know, is this going to be enough for them? And where does it, you know, how much is it going to raise?
We have made our decisions, though. We're looking at the evaluations of any amounts. Any amount that we have come up so far would be enough to make sure that we can facilitate two firemen and make sure the fire department is being careful.
Would we have extra money at the end of the year, or is it going to be like an overflow?
We still don't have those numbers yet, because we haven't made any decisions. In fact, we may not even raise a fire fee at this point, so it's a new point until we figure it out.
We wanted this opportunity to hear what people's concerns.
Now, if you go with a club fifty, it would be... I can tell you that the numbers that we come up, if we come up with a basic number that we feel is enough for ordinance to be changed, and it's not going to hurt the citizens after hearing what you've said, it will be the minimum amount that we need to make sure that our fire department is supplied with the bumper.
Another question on commercial property. Um, how would that be determined per property? Would it be, you know, uh, ten thousand square foot per parcel of land, or would it be, would it be accumulated at a parcel, or would that be...
That's a great question, and we're looking at the evaluating those numbers, the formulas to determine whether or not we're going to go square footage, or we're going to maintain the same rate or same formula that we use now, just by increasing the rate. So we have a made decisions on that. When we do make a decision, I will say this, it's become very complicated with square footage. There's a reason why a lot of municipalities started out with square footage and didn't try to change the formula. It becomes quite complicated, and then we start talking sizes, and now somebody actually has to go out and measure something. Um, what we are, I am taking from the conversations that we have, we're just going to make it a very simple increase, enough to make sure that we have enough for our firefighters and our police department. That's the way I see it. I think that's the way council's seeing it now, but we may change when we, when somebody comes over with a better formula than we need to go by. But as of right now, no.
Is it determined by how much they need, by new equipment, or is it just hiring those individuals?
It, it is based upon what the qual, what we need at the Buchanan Fire Department now to have two paid fire staff and to outfit them for a year. That's our ultimate goal.
And some equipment.
I will tell you this, that we can't give you a square number, because they don't go through training, and it depends on what equipment it is, roughly seventy-six thousand per. Okay? Do the multiplication. That should be about right.
Okay, and my last question, please, we'll just go on, on the utility bills, is that correct?
Yes. There is no other.
That's how we...
Okay.
Just to get my opinion out, the three dollars is really not that much of an increase. I mean, I know it's double, but...
Dollar fifty for Coke.
I mean, yeah, it's just buying two sodas less a month, you know, per resident. Now, the commercial's a little bit different, but that...
Yeah, and it's really not the residents, and I've got, and I've got, and I've said this before, I'm just going to throw it out there one more time. The residents are subsidizing the fire and the police fees right now, folks. The residents are paying the most. The commercials and our businesses are not paying the amount that the citizens are paying. Why? Because you have so many more citizens than you do businesses. Okay? Take that, multiply the number per citizen that you're paying on utility bill, and if I could give you the numbers of all the businesses and what they're paying, let's just say a hundred and fifty for Walmart, you can guess that there's not a whole lot of money going into that fire fee from commercial or businesses. It's the resident subsidy.
Right.
Having said that, any other?
But that is one of the few... But that is one of the few things that goes that way. I mean, most, all the other fees are staggered, heavy on businesses and commercial, and light on residential. I mean, I do agree with the fire fee. I mean, I paid $30 on my water bill, and I paid $3 on my home bill, but that particular, the fire fee, is a little different.
Yes. Everybody else, Joey, you want to say something?
Just a quick comment. I really want to thank council, and I'm following up with CJ's. I really think this is a lovely format. I think it was less Form 1. You know, y'all are on your dais up there, and we're okay with that, but I think it kind of had more interaction. I'm just saddened. I'm looking around the room, and actually Sandy mentioned me. How many people live in the city limits that are here? Yeah, where, I mean, it's sad. I'm glad the county people come out. They need to be invested because it's going to, but where are the citizens that complain, as we all do? We're here. I mean, I know you hear from us many times.
When I get home tonight, they'll be calling.
Yeah, and it's really sad that this is, these are big, important issues for businesses and residents, and I'm really disappointed. It has been in the paper. Someone put on Facebook, you know, to come out and, and where are the citizens that should be here talking about? That's just.
So, the city is full of apathy.
Right.
You can tell that from the city election we had a couple of years ago, where 12 and a half percent of the voters turned out to vote, and 12 and a half percent spoke for the other 80 percent. Why are they letting this happen?
I think it's more of a matter, and I appreciate what everyone's saying, and it's not new. In fact, this is a lot bigger crowd than I actually thought we were going to get tonight, so I'm really impressed with it. Having said that, though, I think by hope and doubt, by making sure, I think, I don't know if you guys have noticed, we haven't passed an ordinance in, going on three months. Has anybody noticed that? Do you know why? Because this council's taking a look at everything that's in that ordinance. They're not just passing it. They're reading each line on it. They're taking a look. Does it affect you, and how does it affect you, and is it going to be something they want to go with? Because next year, guess what? If you don't like what, if you don't think they heard what you said tonight, and we change it, what can you do next year in 2016? All right?
It'll make it three more.
Having said that.
I've got a question, and maybe you all could help me. The rating of the fire department affects my home insurance.
It is your home.
The better the fire department, the more cost effective it is from my insurance side.
Yes, can I throw one little tidbit on top of that? And this is actually something I meant to say when I was up there. Realize that your insurance is affected by our ISO rating, just as you just said. This is one reason why I do like the sprinkler. I'm not, I'm not for cutting down one more speed like it does, but I do like the sprinkler, and I'm going to tell you why. Because when our ISO comes in and picks a building that we have to provide the fire flow for, if it has a sprinkler, it doesn't count. They won't look at it. Now, keep in mind, if you live inside the city limits, your rating also is affected by buildings in our first due area, which are outside the city limits.
And the size of water line they have.
Whenever you go and see these oil and gas buildings that have no sprinkler system and are massive, if ISO picks one of those our next time, get ready, because your insurance is going to skyrocket.
There's no water there. You've got eight, 9,000 square foot buildings with no sprinklers and no water.
Oh, how does the council resolve that? How do we use all that?
With these guys right here, and these guys, when they put a water line in, mandate they put fire hydrants.
Mayor, I do want to interject about the Fire Academy, because I was one of the first ones to go. Because of going to the Fire Academy, my fire insurance, when I lived up in Tenerton, my homeowner's insurance went sky high on my new building. Well, I called my homeowner's insurance, and I said, "Why did my insurance go up?" They said, "Because where you live." And I said, "Well, wait a minute. I just went to a leadership academy at the fire department." And they said, "Well, because where you live, your fire insurance went up." I said, "No, it didn't, because I just went to a leadership academy, and my zoning was good." So my insurance went back down. So, I support my fire department, but I don't want my taxes to go up. It's just like my school taxes. I didn't want my school bond, my legal, who's my guy? That guy. Now, I give to my school, I give to my school, and I want to give to it. It's just like any other charity, and I give to my fire department, but it's out of my pocket that I do it, but I don't want it out of my tax bill. Because that's how I feel about it. And by the way, I've got deer in my backyard. I want somebody to take care of it.
Talking about that.
That was the other.
That's a very good point, and I will add, while we have a community forum here, that the Police Firefighters Academy is starting again in the next two weeks, as well as the Police Citizens Academy. I also took the Firemen's Academy class and learned so much from it. I would encourage that for anyone. Having said that, do I have any other?
I've got to run real quick.
This is somebody who has.
I've heard about all of this, and the opinion, which I haven't yet, but what I haven't heard is going back to 1984, what the rate was then, how many fire personnel we had, what the cost has been over the years, what the number of calls have increased over the years. And I think that's the first thing, is you sit down, and I know this because I spent 18 years at EMS. I do have to sit and justify this from day one on, and when you do that, then there's no question.
I think.
I'm getting there, Mary. Thank you very much. And to your point, yes, and that's something we have done through our meetings previously, and unfortunately, maybe you didn't get it in the press or whatever. We can have those numbers, and we can get that for you. JB, if you want to elaborate on that, though, from the fire department's.
I give you, I started in 1990, sir. In 1990, we ran 92 calls. Last year, we almost hit 600. So with the same amount of staffing, four people, same amount of people with half the volunteers. We had, we probably had 45 when I started in 1990, and in 2003, we had 39, and now we have 20.
What's the population been in 40 years?
Well, the city's been about, grown a little bit, but outside the city, which we call our first due district, has increased dramatically. I mean, when you look at Children's Run in the 80s, there might have been five houses on it, and now there's 70 houses on Children's Run. And Keesling Mill, Mount Nebo, Buchanan Mountain, Stony Run. Look at Stony Run, that was a farm up there, and now there's 25 houses on that farm. You know, so it has really, and big houses, okay? It's just, our call volume, the diversity of the calls that we go on, I mean, we used to, when I first got in, would run 90 to 100 fires a year, and now we run 60 to 70 fires, but we run 300 car rags. And when that call comes in as a car rack, that dispatcher, when somebody says, "You're on the cell phone. I just drove by and a guy rolled over in the medium. I don't know anything about it," they send two fire departments. Now, a lot of people might think that's overkill, but you may get there, and there may be a whole family trapped in a car burning, or you may get there and a guy sitting in a ditch. So you have to treat each one of them as an emergency until somebody tells you otherwise. So, call volume has increased every year. When all else fails, people call the fire department, whether, you know, I've gotten cows out of the river, pigs out of the rivers, you know, cats out of trees, you know, it doesn't matter. If we can do it, we'll go do it.
Thank you, JB. Just a moment. Go ahead, Dan.
I just want to ask you, is there anything you think could be done to promote volunteerism?
That's Joey's.
Well, I know that even though it's half of what it used to be, everybody were working at jobs then also, so what's the difference?
I'm not going to go very far into detail, but if anybody is truly interested in that topic, we took it upon ourselves three weeks ago, four weeks ago, within our department, we didn't open it up to community because we didn't want to be there all day. We felt we needed to get our thoughts on paper and get our stuff together. We held a forum. You know, I moderated it. We had a guy taking notes. We wrote down every problem that we felt was impending against us. We wrote what we felt the future was going to bring upon us, both for, both external factors and internal factors. Then we took them in and did kind of like, if you're familiar with the SWOT theory, we did our strengths and our weaknesses and everything, and then we came up with solutions. And everything that we're talking about is local solutions. We believe in local problems solved by local solutions by local people. We don't want to be relying on the state government. We don't want to be relying on the federal government. As Bobby said, we need help now. I mean, we don't need to be waiting for a lot to kick in. If anybody wants to see that, I'll be glad to share those with you. We have a lot of good ideas, and I hope you'll see them coming.
Thank you very much. And, yeah, it's not just volunteer fire department. If you'll notice, Create, I think it's probably one of the most impressive volunteer groups that we have in town, because not only are they retaining their volunteers, they're actually gathering volunteers. We could use them as a great example of how to do that. What I'll do now, it's kind of late for everyone, we are going to have another one of these town hall meetings in July, August, okay? The next one is not going to be just for the citizens. We needed to hear, because we've got some decisions coming up the next month, month and a half, pertaining, I'm going to get there, Pam, pertaining to what we're discussing. So we needed to hear from you. Don't forget, you can always come to council. You can see any of the council members if you really want to relay a point to them to get to us so that we understand better your point of views. Having said that, what I will do is allow council, please council, a very brief statement on the meeting that you feel tonight, and how you feel that it went. Pam?
There was a citizen that didn't get his fee.
Who would that be, ma'am?
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Mills? Don't Terry. Did you have something to add?
Question. How much funding does the city get from the county for the fire department, if any?
I'm not, I can't discuss, I don't have those numbers, but as far as I know, unless you're talking volunteer fire department, none.
So, where do you?
$15,000 for, per year on the budget.
That's for fees, that's for maintenance and insurance on two, they own two trucks.
We also obtained grants, like, six months ago, they requested 50 radios for using in emergency purposes. We said we were able to secure a grant for them for those radios in about a month. Fire Board, from the money that they obtained, which is an independent agency that operates under county auspices, the last five or six years, anywhere between $25,000 to $30,000 a year goes to the seven volunteer departments, not to the city.
That's the county fire.
But listen to what both you guys just said. You both drew that line.
You drew a line.
You drew the line, and that's what we're saying we want rid of. When we asked about the radios, your administrator asked, "Will your paid firemen be using these?" You're drawing that line.
Addressing, is that for the city or for the county?
And there's something I try to make sure that we avoided here, and I didn't, and I hope I did not say between, I'm sure in Buchanan, because I don't see the difference. If I ask somebody from Tenerton, where do they live, usually they're going to say, if they're from wherever, it's Buchanan. It's not Tenerton, it's not Rock Lake. Having said this as well, the county and the city do work very well together on many things. JC and I get to talk on a weekly basis, because I go up and bug them up. They're on Thursday, but having said that, metro government, you've got to understand what metro government is. In a big city, in a big county, it makes sense. We talk Louisville. We talk, I'm going to give you my example, because I came from San Antonio. San Antonio has a metro government. You want to know why? Because the city is as big as the county. That's why. We can't do that here. We can't do that here. I'll repeat it, we can't do that here. Now, we could have some sort of cooperative agreement or spirit between the two law enforcement bodies or safety bodies, but from metro government, from council to county, will not work here. I will repeat, we are too small. A metro government is a city government that encompasses a county, okay? Just make sure everybody understands that. Having said that, there is a chance for metro government. The county and the city talk together all the time. I don't know why there seems to be some sort of a line there. As far as I'm concerned, there is no line. Having said that, is there anything else from any of the citizens? Thank you very much. Mrs. Rock, silence.
This has been a great meeting. I have taken in a lot of information, and I appreciate you coming. I will like to say briefly that I don't think it's fair, well, Walmart and, let's say CJ Maggie, pay the same amount of money for police protection. There was 182 arrests, shoplifting arrests at Walmart last year.
How many at CJ's?
I would be willing to say that CJ never called him once.
No rest.
Yeah, so I think you need to do a way to maybe increase what, the companies and businesses that need the police to come out more and do more things.
Would DC be based on property value? So Walmart sure is not going to pay the same amount as he does.
No, but just think about what Walmart pays in B and O tax, and, you know, how that applies, so maybe that's.
What you're talking about, fire fees on.
I would also like to say that I stopped by the fire station last night for the first time, and the gentleman over there, Joey, and I had a great talk. He was open and friendly to, you know, we talked about what some of the problems were, what they needed, and I walked away feeling good about our conversation. So if you're out and you have nothing, you know, some time to kill, whatever, or just because you want to, go in there and talk to them. I guarantee you, they will be friendly.
They have really good coffee, too.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that attended here this evening. It's one of the great things, the open meetings like this. I can never remember having one of these before, and I've been living here since I was old enough that I can't remember how old I was when I was here and stuff. But a couple of things here, annexation, somebody mentioned annexation into the city, and I got to tell you that I will never vote for annexation of any residences into the city that the person does not want to come into the city. Grant writers, yeah, we need a grant writer. I suggested about a year ago that we get grant writers and what they could do for us, and in reference to what Marion County's did, because they did great. I was told we don't have enough money for a grant writer. If we want to get one to do it for free and then take a percentage, no, we need a grant writer. We have always needed a grant writer. Let's see, cats and feral cats. That's a problem on every street in Buchanan, and we do have a cat warden. His name is Jeff Wamsley, and he will come and get your cats, but you've got to call him. Sometimes you've got to catch him first, too. It helps, because you know when you call him, that cat's not going to be there when he gets there. So if you call him, make sure you've got one in captivity. I can't think of anything else, except I was going to talk about apathy, but that's already been done, and I sure appreciate you guys coming out here tonight, ladies, and the Volunteer Fire Academy, I went through that, too, and it is wonderful. And Citizenship Academy, the Leadership Academy that we have here, we've had people that, after they went through that, that got involved in government, county and city government, just by going through that. And I've got to tell you that Create Buchanan is one of the most wonderful organizations there is, because if you look around Buchanan, Create Buchanan and the city combined with the horticulturists that we hired, we're the reason that when you go to Charleston and you say, "I'm from Buchanan," oh, what a wonderful main street you've got in Buchanan, and people are talking all over the state about Buchanan. We want to keep it that way. We don't want them talking about us because we've lost all the business and everything. We don't want to be another Fairmont, or Mannington, or Weston, or anything like that. So God bless you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pew.
I'm not going to repeat all that. I didn't agree with all of it, but majority of it again. I just want to say I'm very honored as a member of city council and a new recruit here, and I think we did one of the things that we promised ourselves as a council that we would do, that we would be more open, and that we would listen to the citizens of the city of Buchanan, and business owners, okay? And I think we've done that tonight, and I'm very, very pleased. I also am proud, as a veteran, that you all are here in our American Legion building, okay? And it's a great place to have a meeting, great place to have a meeting, and we've heard for a long time, you know, we need to get down off our thrones. Well, we may be off our thrones, but my back is killing me sitting in these chairs. So, next time we have one, we, and then bring your neighbor next time. Give somebody a ride or whatever, but talk it up and share the good news of what you've learned. Bring somebody with you, and the next time we have a meeting, I think it'll go over really well. And give us a chance to take what we've learned here tonight, and take it back, and mull it over, and give us an opportunity to come up with the right decision for everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Alvalos. Mrs. Cabari?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. We probably should have looked at the dates on the calendar a little bit better because things going on, but I think for a town that's got, what, 5,000 people? But I think for a town that's got, what, five thousand people?
Fifty-seven hundred.
Okay, it's a shame that no more people come out to these type of things, and, and I think it's been very informative, but I also see the same people are the only ones that's really seemed to be interested, and I appreciate that the ones that you do come out. We don't know if you don't come.
Thank you, Mrs. Capari, well said. Mr. Thomas, sir?
Well, besides, besides thanking everybody for coming this evening, I got three things to observe or throw out or challenge. When JB talks about the, you know, the growth in like Children's Run, and Keesling Mill, and Mount Nebo, and so forth, Stony Run, you know, we have a system, unfortunately, that's broken, and the city and the county need to figure out a way to provide the kind of fire service, not just for the city, but for those outlaying areas. And we got an issue we have to deal with, and I think the city and county need to figure out something to, for the future. We've got to think outside the box. I feel the same way about law enforcement. You know, Rick, I don't disagree with what you're saying about San Antonio and the other large cities, but there are areas where you do have duplication of efforts, and maybe it wouldn't be called metro law enforcement, but, you know, there are ways to, to look at the sheriff's department, the city police department, could that be consolidated into one? I know that's probably a very unpopular thing to think about, but that's something that probably will be thought about sometime in the future. The third is, sometimes I'm considered a critic of Wesleyan College. I worked there for quite a few years, I think it's a wonderful institution, I've had children graduate from there, but we wouldn't be a city like we are today without Wesleyan. But at the same time, there's a, there's a cost to that, too. And I used to live out in Illinois, and I know Evanston, actually at one point in time back in the late seventies, started charging the residential students a fire and police fee. And they felt that there was a cost to having the Northwestern University there, also a benefit. And so I do think that when you look at Wesleyan, you have about twelve hundred residential students. That college pays a total of fifty-seven hundred dollars a year for fire and police fee. I think that's something that needs to be addressed as part of this process. I wanted to throw that out, I was hoping somebody else would besides me, but again, I think Wesleyan is a great asset and a great resource to the community, but we need to recognize that there are cost consequences to that, too. Thanks, thanks again for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I'd like to, the, most, all of the council members' thoughts as well, and thank you[1752.91]